Martin County Board of Education, May 1st regular meeting is called to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands in the nation and to God, who is the Father, who is the Son, and who is the teaching justice for all.
Mr. Baker?
Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for this opportunity to come together as a board to look at the business of our schools. Father, we pray that the decisions that are made here tonight will be the best for the students, teachers, administrators, and everyone involved in the school system as well as our county. Thank you for giving us this opportunity, and this is in your son's name.
For a meeting motion for approval of the agenda?
So.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Now we need approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. So.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Thank you. Ms. Stalls?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Board, thank you for the chance tonight to show you a little bit of good stuff that's going on in our district. I'd like to ask Ms. Cardwell, I do that every time, and the band can come up. First, folks, what we're going to recognize tonight are the Riverside High School Band and their director. The North Carolina Bandmasters Association's music performance assessment was held at Riverside on March 23rd and 24th. And this event brought more than forty fans from the east and more than eighteen hundred people to the Riverside campus for a couple of days. The assessment is equivalent of an in-course exam for a band program. And tonight, we're celebrating the Riverside Band under the direction of Ms. Cardwell for two reasons. One is the tremendous job that they did hosting the event and representing Riverside High School in the process. And the other is for receiving superior marks across the board with their assessment. So congratulations to you all on a job well done. And we'll ask you all to meet me in the back at the greenscreen. So, thank you very much. Next up, we have two participants, it's Riverside night. I want to ask Mr. Mike Harrell and Ms. April Joyner to join us. Having two participants in the North Carolina Center for Advancement of Teaching or NCAT Program out of one school was pretty impressive. And this year, both Mr. Harrell and Ms. Joyner applied and were accepted. Mr. Harrell teaches math at Riverside and is now in his tenth year in the classroom. All of that has been with Martin County Schools and is a Martin County Schools alum. He's completed four badges in the math program for NCAT, Core Instruction Practices, R捨ger and Representations, Building and Facilitating Numbers, Sense of Routines, and Authentic Problem Solving. All these things he can bring back to his classroom. Ms. Joyner, who is a foods and nutrition and culinary arts teacher at Riverside, is in her sixth year in the classroom and her second with Martin County Schools. She completed the Candace Time to Design class, which lets participating teachers learn best practices for effective online lesson planning. And she's going to take what she learned and bring back to the CTE team who started next fall. So she's going to be able to share her knowledge with quite a large group of people and make lesson planning more innovative for our whole CTE team. So, thank you, both.
Thank you. Continuing, first, I want to thank the board for approving the Principal Fellowship Scholarship from Martin County Schools. We managed to get two of these from East Carolina, which is a good thing for us. As Mr. Baker mentioned in the previous meeting, the need for us to really look and develop talent again. I think this is a good way to start to do that. I think, I know there'd be at least four, potentially five that are in the East Carolina program. Now, two will finish this year and the other three, maybe three starting. I think that's the right direction. I'd like to ask Ms. Maggie Blangia and Mr. Clarence Pointe to come forward for a moment, please. Ms. Blangia actually started teaching with us in 2017, was here for a couple of years, left us, and saw the light and came back. We appreciate that she did that and we're doing it. She's been teaching for five years, if I have it right, at South Creek Middle School, eighth grade science, if I remember correctly. Excuse me, my apologies. Mr. Pointe from Riverside High School, career technical education. Looks like he teaches a bunch of stuff that'd be good to be in his classroom in terms of Google, particularly Google work, docs, and the rest of that going on. He, his family, as you know, has been a long time educator here in Martin County, and he decided to continue that tradition. So we'd like to recognize both of these folks. This scholarship will pay their tuition fees. Board has agreed to keep them on salary through next year, and then the fellowship will pay for their salary their second year as they complete it. By that time, they'll be ready to take on and do great things for Martin County. So, Ms. Blangia, congratulations.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
Oh, I won't say much. I'll just say thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for believing in me and giving me the opportunity to be able to do this. This is, this is a blessing.
Thank you.
Good evening. I echo what she said. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our students and the service staff here in Martin County. Thank you for believing in us, and we'll make you proud.
Thank you.
Summer school update. Dr. Cecil?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so this summer, we have quite a few programs going on. The first one is our summer reading camp, the Read to Achieve Camp. The state says that we must offer the opportunity to attend camp for any third grade students that do not demonstrate proficiency. That means they have a LexIps score of less than seven twenty-five. And any second grade student that is exhibiting reading difficulties, which basically means their EOI DIBL score is less than four thirty-nine. It has to be seventy-two hours of instruction, and it has to be taught by fully licensed, certified teachers. So our level entry teachers and our non-traditional pathway teachers actually are not eligible to teach second and third grade. We have the option of offering summer school to our first grade students who are also not demonstrating proficiency, and they would be double scores less than four forty-one. Those students, we actually can use some of our initially licensed teachers to help teach those students. So for summer reading camp, we actually sent out letters to one hundred and fourteen first graders, one hundred and nine second graders, and one hundred and seven third graders that as of February were not on track to show proficiency. We ended up having sixty-two students that have committed to come in first grade, sixty-three in second, and sixty-four in third. So we have a total of one hundred and eighty-nine students who are actually going to attend Read to Achieve Camp this summer. We have seventeen certified staff, four classified staff, and approximately six bus drivers, and some of those may be also some of the teacher assistants that we're using. So for the summer program for Read to Achieve, we're actually going to use a curriculum called Lit Camp, and I'm pretty excited about this. It has, it's a themed camp, and through the camp, it's going to offer read alouds, independent reading, writing, phonics, many like awareness, and actually has an online piece as well for the students to participate in. So it's kind of exciting. This is new for us.
It'll be the science of reading program?
It does, it follows the science of reading, yes ma'am. So we're pretty excited about that. The additional programs that we're looking at offering is our credit recovery, and that's going to be at Riverside High School in South Creek. We're going to use the Apex Platform again, like we did last summer, to qualify for credit recovery. Students have to have a minimum of a fifty average to recover that course. So if they didn't pass the course, but they had like a fifty-one final average, they're eligible to participate in credit recovery. We can also use credit recovery to buy back days. So we've got some students that passed the class, they made a seventy, eighty, ninety in the class, but they missed too many days. So they can actually also come back and buy back days through credit recovery. The next camp that we're going to offer is STEM Camp, and it's going to be open to fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, and it's going to be here at the Innovation Campus. We initially had a smaller number, and we received so many applications that we've actually added, so I'm going to talk about that in just a second. But through the STEM Camp, we're going to do introduction to STEM and scientific method, engineering robotics, coding and programming, renewable energy and environmental science. And then the final day, the students are actually going to create projects and present those. So we're kind of excited about that as well.
And is that open to every, every student?
For fifth and sixth, yes ma'am.
Does that have to be not doing well or whatever?
Correct. We sent letters to every fourth, fifth, and sixth grader in the county and invited them.
Without sign that form?
So we actually have, initially, we had forty-five slots. We bumped that up to sixty because we did get sixty-one applications, and so we're going to go ahead and include that sixty-first person as well in the STEM Camp. For credit recovery at Riverside, we've got seventy students that have signed up, they've committed to attend. South Creek has sixty-five. As I said, we've opened STEM up to sixty instead of forty-five kids. We've also increased our staff by one to be able to accommodate those. The other camps that are going to be here are the career and technical education camps, and the first week is for rising ninth through twelfth graders. Ms. Christian Berry is actually going to run that camp. And then the second week will be for rising ninth graders. And she's projecting about forty each week for that camp with four staff members. It's kind of her projection at this point. So in terms of dates, we will host Read to Achieve Camp at EJ Hayes. It's going to run twelve days, June fifteenth through the thirtieth, from seven forty-five to three o'clock. Same thing at South Creek. Riverside High School and South Creek High School will run the two credit recovery programs. They'll be June nineteenth through the thirtieth, take a break for the fourth, and come back the fifth through the fourteenth. And those programs will run from eight to twelve. The fourth, fifth, and sixth grade STEM Camp is five days, June nineteenth through the twenty-third. It'll run from eight to one. And then the two career and technical education camps, one runs the week of the twentieth through the twenty-third, and the other one's the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth. And both those programs are eight to one as well.
Do you stay in grade for the CTE camps?
Yes, and the first week is rising ninth through twelfth graders, and the second week is, I'm sorry, that's right, is current eighth graders. Current seventh graders, rising eighth graders, sorry about that. So we'll end up with our STEM Camp. Between the two camps, we'll cover everybody fourth through twelfth, inviting them to STEM. Any questions?
I have a question, Dr. Cecil. Who are our STEM instructors?
So, we actually just talked about that today. Our four STEM instructors will be, hopefully, Tracy Williams, Erica Lightwood, and Dr. West is actually going to also have a STEM group. So, hopefully, they all applied and were excited about it. You think so? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Rob.
Evening, sir.
Hi, everyone. You should have in your packets some information that I have that I'm presenting to you tonight. Should be the Martin County Schools report cases by schools. As you can see, we've only had one reported case in the month of April, and this is not only good for this particular report, but if you also keep in mind, we had a week in which students were out on spring break. So the fact that we were able to go out on extended break and come back and only have one reported case, this is in line with what Mr. Gray from the Martin County Health Department shared with me, because in the county within itself, they put a month of April and have about twenty-eight cases that were reported. You can see in the graphs that I included with you, the report that is shared with you, you can see where we are as a county. You see that the entire state of North Carolina is green with regard to the COVID spread data. And then there's other information with these charts and graphs that are there for you. I did present to you last month that on May eleventh, the public health emergency would come to an end. That will not really have an impact on us as much as it does with regard to the health field, with regard to Medicaid and billing and emergency things. All of the vaccines that were approved through emergency approval are fully approved now by the CDC, and so we will continue to move forward. You should also have inside of your packet the procedures which we follow that covers with regard to if we do have a COVID case. Ms. West said that they are still required to report to the state. So the tracking will be a little bit different, and the analogy that we use is that with the end of the public health emergency, they're starting to try to land the plane. The wheels are coming down, so there may be some things that will be changing over time with regard to the emergency organizations and things that we were permitted and allowed to do, the monies that we have. We currently are using some of those funds that provide for testing in our schools. It still remains, it may come to an end, we don't know, as Mr. Gray pointed out. So again, it doesn't affect us as much with regard to that. So I'm pleased to share this report with you. What questions do you have?
Thank you. Mr. Barber?
Good evening, Board, good to see everyone. I want to provide with you some information for the summer feeding program that will operate for this school year. So, operation dates will be begin June fourteenth, and that will run through July twenty-eighth. July third and fourth will be closed in observance of the Fourth of July holiday. And on July thirty-first, that will be an actual workday for our staff so they can sanitize, clean, and break down those cafeterias in order to be ready for the start of the next school year in August. The two sites that will be operating, the first is going to be EJ Hayes Elementary School. So in bold, you will see the Martin County Schools learning programs, that that site will be providing meals for. Some of those programs will be on-site at EJ Hayes. Some of those other programs will be had, we have to be able to distribute it with the help of Dr. Cecil, some teaching coaches, and some Martin County Schools staff. The ones under that bolded, those bolded programs are going to be the community programs that will be supported at EJ Hayes. So that's going to be the program that we are, that we're operating on the eastern side of the county, excuse the site, I apologize. South Creek Elementary School is going to be the site that we're operating on the western part of the county. Again, in bold, you'll see the Martin County Schools learning programs that we're operating. Under those, you'll see those community programs that we are also supporting on the western part of the county. So both of these sites, while we're operating both, or excuse me, while we're supporting both students that are on-site or are learning programs and off-site or learning and/or community programs, these sites are also going to operate as open sites, meaning that children throughout our community ages as a regulation stage zero to eighteen are eligible to walk in and receive both breakfast and lunch while operating at those operating sites.
Even though they're not in school or our program?
Correct, yes ma'am. Just to be able to support our kids while they're out for those summer months. There is, again, a regulation that states that those meals have got to be eaten on-site. That stems for the safety sanitation, ensuring that those meals are eaten within the time range for those meals to be considered safe. So, any questions that I'd be happy to answer for you?
And last summer, they could take them?
No, ma'am. That was during COVID. So last time, prior to that, we were distributing meals to our community. But last summer, we actually were, they had to be back, yes ma'am, correct.
What is the problem with South Creek, because they don't have bus transportation?
Well, a lot of our, a lot of the programs such as WC Chance and the Kids Excel Program are operating on, in the area of the east end, the WC Chance building.
So they can bring them to the site?
So a lot of those programs are, are taking care of our students that would be in need of getting to those sites.
Or they would do welcome to school?
Correct, yes ma'am, of those actual community support systems.
So at WC Chance, we'll have the food?
So yeah, WC Chance will, their staff will come pick those meals up for those kids that are housed at WC. Yes ma'am, correct, correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Barber.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Lauren?
Good evening. My first presentation tonight is Internet Safety Policy thirty-two twenty-six for the first reading. So just to give you a little history or background, each year, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's E-Rate Technology Coordinator sends out a Google form, usually in February, due in April, and Mr. Bullock and I complete that form usually on a workday in March, because we have to go through a lot of network information. And basically, what they ask for is our current policies and how they are linked on the website so the public can have access to them. And this deals with internet security. The two current policies that we have are thirty-two twenty-five, which is technology used for students, which the board approved in February of two thousand and six, and seventy-three, policy seventy-three twenty, which is the technology acceptable use policy for employees, which was adopted also in two thousand and six and revised in two thousand and thirteen to add a social media component to it. So now, in two thousand and twenty-three, when we completed this form in March like we normally did, we just completed, we sent it to DPI. Last week, our E-Rate Consultant and Technology Consultant for Department of Public Instruction said now that the state and the federal would like to separate our technology from the internet. So in other words, our first two policies which the board has approved, thirty-two twenty-five and seventy-three twenty, are have to do with our hardware and software available to students and staff, and they want to separate the internet usage out of that, which is the policy that we have included tonight for the, for the first read. Sorry about that, I was hitting anything here. So they want to include it tonight, which is the thirty-two twenty-six, which is the information that we have included tonight. And we're not the only district that is having this or having to go back and add this policy to make a revision. So in other words, we have to follow the Child Internet Protection Act, or SIPA, which will be the policy thirty-two twenty-six. SIPA was enacted by Congress in two thousand, which is the Child Internet Protection Act. And as you can see, it addresses concerns about accessing schools and libraries to the internet and other information. For any school library that receives discounts for internet, which Martin County Schools does, we receive a ninety percent discount on our internet through the E-Rate program and for, and for our internal connections. SIPA imposes certain requirements. Schools and libraries subject to SIPA do not receive E-Rate unless they certify that we are SIPA compliant. We have been SIPA compliant, however, now we have to just separate out into a specific policy, which, which you'll have the first read tonight. And these include measures to block or filter pictures that are obscene, pornographic. When computers or internet are accessed by minors, schools are required to adopt the policy to monitor online activities of minors. Schools and libraries subject to SIPA are required to adopt the policy addressing, like I said, once you get access to the worldwide web, safety and security, unauthorized access, unauthorized disclosure or use, and restricting minors to harmful material. And so they, we have the policy up here, and when we went to, when Ms. Morris, who is the head of E-Rate at the Department of Public Instruction, E-Rate and Internet Safety, or what she did was she sent us a link to a federal website which has the policy guidelines or attempted, provided us a template in which we used. And then Mr. Bullock used some guidelines and some internet, on internet safety on other policies in school systems around us that already have it. And so we set up and followed the guidelines and the template. So we covered things like hacking, student privacy, cyberbullying, and those areas which are included in policy for the first read.
Want to just move right on into the next item?
Yes. Yes, sir. All right, the Martin County Schools Career and Technical Education Plan is part of a two-year program that we have to do to be able to receive funding. So last year, when I gave the presentation, that was a long presentation because it was the beginning of our two-year plan called Proposal. This year is year two, so basically what we'll do is we'll go through parts of last year's presentation, kind of show you where we're at and what we're going to be using our funding for, for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. And of course, this is part of the mandatory plan. So basically, our funding is, is broken into three different categories. The first one is PRC thirteen, which is our Months of Employment. So with our Months of Employment, this year, we receive a hundred, or projected receive a hundred and fifty-six Months of Employment, and we're using a hundred and forty-eight. And the reason we're holding some Months of Employment back for our, for two reasons. One, if we need to make any adjustments to our staffing based on registration and numbers that we get in. And the second one is that Months of Employment, we can also convert those into supply money and those items or use them for substitutes or as openings and as things adjust. And so how we have it broken down is by each school, so like Riverside High School, we have two family and consumer science positions. Riverside Middle School, we have two positions that cover STEM, Google Workspace, and Career Exploration. South Creek High School, we have one family and consumer science teacher. South Creek Middle School, we have a STEM and Agriculture Education teacher. And then the Innovation Campus, we have our CTE Coordinator, which is, you've met before and she's presented, Ms. Kristin Berry. Our Adobe Academy, which we've added this past year in our plan, and that's one position. Two more agriculture positions, one in agricultural mechanics and engineering, and one in animal science. And then we also added this year, we added our Advanced Manufacturing and Game Art Design, our two health science positions, and for the upcoming year, we'd like to add a Career Development Coordinator. And this will be, because with the popularity of the career fair and the opening of our facility and our students up to have the opportunities to explore different careers, we want to station a person at all three locations so they can do internships, pre-apprenticeships, manage major clarity, and do the career portfolios, which are becoming a big discussion and talking point at the legislature. So we'd like, if they go through with it, we would like to be able to be out in front.
So how many did we have this year? Just one?
For the career development? Oh, Ms. Kristin Berry did, and I divided that up.
Right, so next year, it will be y'all two and another person?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-three?
Yes, ma'am, to manage that. All right, so an overview of our CTE program adjustments for twenty-three, twenty-four. We are continuing to work with how we adjust our programs due to decline in enrollment and duplication of programs at the Innovation Campus and at the schools. We're also still working with the cost of refitting and overhauling programs at South Creek and Riverside, and we're about ninety percent there as far as getting those kitchens up where they need to be so that teachers can do the full culinary arts.
So what in the overhauling are we doing there?
Well, we put in, brought in almost all-new equipment, like large items like refrigerators, ovens, those types of things, and we'd like to be able to get some more equipment and tools for them to be able to use to match up.
Anything other than culinary are we doing?
For those, well, we're overhauling our other program, the middle schools, which will be included in the presentation a little bit farther along. and then some other items. So basically, we're just taking the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties and bringing it up to twenty twenty-three, uh, or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. We want to, uh, do some more career exploration and development with grades five through twelve. And also we want to allow, uh, Martin County School, School students to have access to new and innovative labs and classrooms, which is part of the refitting. Uh, use our, uh, like I said, continue to use our financial resources on new and upgrading equipment for all programs and adding new pathway options based on labor market data, um, that we get from our star jobs report. All right, our State fourteen is our second one, P R C fourteen, that is a state budget and it's used for money to, uh, support our programs. And as the list, it's the same as, uh, last year where we do field trips, workshops with the, uh, teachers, uh, substitute pay for those workshop, contractor, contract and repairs and services, computer software supplies, other workshops, rental fees, general travel reimbursements, instructional supplies, and to continue the credentialing for our students like we had the recognition for, uh, back in February. Federal seventeen, that's part of the Perkins Grant, which is now we're in revisions called Perkins Five. Uh, this will be for, uh, workshop expenses, field trips. Basically, this is for program enhancement, like our next year, our goal is, or not goal, but our plan is we're adding game art design. One of the biggest needs in this area are students with, uh, computer programming skills, not just the, uh, skills to be able to use a computer, but the actual programming and the game art design. So we're refitting one of our labs for that, along with, uh, beefing up the advanced manufacturing, uh, courses and our health science courses.
Graphic design, do we do that?
Ma'am?
Do we do graphic design?
That's through the Adobe, that we do that through the Adobe Academy.
Adobe?
Yes, ma'am. All right, so our budget needs are how we're going to be using our funding, um, on these next couple of slides we're talking about is, like I said, we're going to continue to upgrade equipment, additional supplies to really work on the fifth grade expansion this upcoming year, uh, for those students coming to middle school. Uh, instructional supplies for all program, uh, continue our professional development, which include, includes the credentialing for our teachers along with the students. We want to expand the major clarity, uh, to include it with work-based learning, which we'll talk a little bit more in a minute. Uh, like I say, career exploration trips and offer career exploration more events, our actual activities for fifth through eighth grade. All right, so our future plans, uh, as part of our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four plan, uh, for the Martin County Schools Administration, we need to continue to work to educate our administrators on what our programs entail and how they are, how they fit in to what we're trying to do, not only as a program but as a community. Um, with our C T staff, we're going to continue to evolve and improve as a group, and we're spending a lot of money on professional development and training and upgrading their equipment. Our, our students, uh, one of the things that, uh, we noticed last year when the kids signed up, they were, they signed up for courses, but they weren't sure exactly. So what, thanks to the both, the middle school principals, we were able to get into both middle schools and present to the eighth grader a pretty comprehensive overview of all of our classes and be able to, and basically take it to them. And both middle school principals were very, very helpful with that, uh, giving us access to those students. Um, our local business and industry concerns, we've had two, uh, we've rebooted our Business Advisory Committee. Um, and so we've had two very good meetings, uh, of those groups. And we have, our third is scheduled for August fifteenth. We have our first one here, and it went well enough that I P G, Interstate Polymer Group, which used to be Site Man, invited us to come in. And now, uh, Domtar wants the one up, and so we're going to go to Domtar for our next meeting in August to get us out, uh, to them.
Can we go back to one?
Yes, ma'am.
The one with the eighth through twelfth grade?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I missed out on the understanding what you're saying. The counselor's not emphasizing course pathways and using T, or using this basic, or what are we doing about that?
Well, what we, what we've been able to do is give the counselors and working with the admin to give them a, and the students, a better understanding of those courses.
Because that was one of our concerns going into a I C environment like.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're working on that thing.
Yes, ma'am.
That's very important.
Yes, ma'am, we took what you, uh, when we went through our stuff, as we gone through the year, the concerns that the board expressed starting last school year when we read.
Parents and students.
Yes, ma'am.
Need to be aware of.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and our final, final part is, uh, like I said, we're going to continue to move C T courses to the Innovation Campus except for the culinary arts. Um, we're going to implement two more Paxton Patterson Labs. We already have one, but we're going to add eleven more modules at Riverside Middle and then eight new modules at, uh, South Creek Middle High School to explore the STEM and careers. And those instructors will be getting some, uh, professional development this summer. We're going to implement next spring, so that'd be twenty twenty-four, our vet assisting program or certification for our animal science students. Um, the implementation of the game art design at the Innovation Campus. Of course, we talked about the hiring the Career Development Coordinator to work with students five through twelve and continue with the major clarity and our four-year career development plans and work-based learning.
Um, the Paxton Patterson.
Yes, ma'am.
That saves kids, right?
Yes, ma'am. And kind of what we are.
When the other company found over, still with their kids?
Well, they, we don't get kids, and then we get the credentialing and the online activities from them.
Oh, oh, so it's always been Paxton Patterson where you get, y'all got a make space kids or something?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're adding on then?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we're building on the kits that we already had at Riverside Middle, and then we're adding on at South Creek. This, uh, Gorganus is gonna do her agricultural biotech, and then half will be the STEM.
So do we have any kits at the Innovation Center or that's just at the high school?
They're at Riverside Middle School. Those kits are at Riverside Middle.
The kids?
Yes, ma'am, the kids and those activities, because our teachers already have their curriculum.
So on here, do we have kids at the Innovation Center?
No, ma'am, we have our.
Just in both high schools, right?
Or both middle schools, yes, ma'am.
Middle school, okay.
Yes, ma'am, because we've got.
Yeah, that's the beginning of the year.
That's right, we got our advanced manufacturing kits here.
Okay.
That Mr. Prettyman is teaching in advanced.
But that's high school.
Yes, ma'am, that's hard.
I'm catching up a little about the.
You're, yes, ma'am, we're good.
Well, we're really coming along without C T breaking them off.
Yes, ma'am, it's been a team effort, and we've got a lot of good folks there who are doing a way of it all. Yes, ma'am.
That's great. That's going to help keep people here, kids here with their career more, anything I know of.
If willing, this, uh, business and industry has really stepped up and.
And if they just aware of what we're doing, they'll step in, I think.
They, and they, some already have, yes, ma'am.
All right, we've heard Mr. Guard's presentation of the C T E two-year plan, need a motion for approval?
Second.
Good. Have a motion and a second to approve the C T E two-year plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Start with the Child Nutrition Manager Salary. As you're all aware, last year, the General Assembly increased salaries for state employees up to fifteen dollars at a minimum. With that resulted for us in, in a number of programs, particularly in our Child Nutrition Program, that both our managers and our Child Nutrition employees ended up at exactly the same place on the pay scale, at fifteen dollars an hour.
Who did say that, please?
I said, well, because of the fifteen-hour minimum salary in our Child Nutrition Program, both the managers and the Child Nutrition workers.
Yeah.
Ended up exactly the same place on the pay scale, at fifteen dollars an hour. Even though the managers have sufficiently a lot more to do i- in terms of doing their jobs and making sure the program works right. I know your, the board is looking at a broader scale and trying to raise salaries across the board, and I, I would encourage you to keep doing that. But I really believe this one, this is an instance where we have a class of employees where we should try to fix that problem before we get to the rest of it. So what we're proposing is to raise the manager salaries from fifteen dollars an hour to eighteen dollars an hour. This will put them, most of them just about in line with what that final salary adjustment will be if you finish the pay scale increases as proposed. We'd like that to become effective upon adoption, if you're willing. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any, any question? All right, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Child Nutrition Manager Salary, let me.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Child Nutrition Nutrition Manager's Salary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Yes, thank you.
Next item is the. Renovations at Innovation Campus, as, as you know, we ended the lease, as we chested in the area, this ended the building down here, which is a big open space at the moment. And we're looking at trying to develop that into a new location for the central office. Uh, we, we've got some general plans drawn out, but we felt we needed a bit more expert advice in terms of making, utilizing the space and making sure that we did not violate any of the building codes or some of the other things that we may not be aware of in terms of doing it. We've also had a problem getting assistance from the Department of Public Construction in terms of their engineering services, which are running well behind. They have a number of new employees that are still learning state regulations in addition to what their engineering jobs are. I reached out to Mr. Height and Height Associates, a great person that I've worked with in the past in a couple of projects, and he's done a very good job in things that I've worked with him on in the past.
He's an architect?
Yes, he's an architect. He's agreed to take it on. This is an unusual project in that we, it's not a thing where the architect is going to come in and bid the work and supervise it. We're planning on doing the majority of the work ourselves and bidding out things that are more laborious to get finished or time-consuming. We put a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the budget as a placeholder to do that. I'm hoping we can get it done for that, about that amount of money by the time we get through and finish with it. But I do believe it would be worthwhile to have someone with professional expertise to help us along the way and to help us if we need engineering services that can make those available to us.
So does C T, is that the design?
Well, he's got a full architectural firm, I mean.
So they do the design of.
Yes, that's, yes. Well, they, they're actually going to do the layout on the inside.
The layout, right, okay.
That's right.
Is his contract included in the hundred and sixty thousand?
I think, I think, I do not have that included. The hundred and sixty thousand was our estimate for him actually doing the work. And this, if, if the board is willing to approve this, uh, Mr. Pearson has a copy of the contract, being proposed and currently reviewing it. So it would be, your approval will be based upon his review and final approval of the contract in terms of putting it in place.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the renovations at Innovation Campus for the central office. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Next item, the permission is to be, release period for administrative contracts. In hiring folks over the last couple of months, uh, one of the things we've noted is that almost all the surrounding school systems and back close school systems in North Carolina have adopted a sixty-day release period for administrators as a proportion of their contract. So that when someone decides to switch systems, they have to wait sixty days to go until somebody can fill that position. We're currently oper- operating on a thirty-day release period, which I think puts us in a disadvantage. We have, we have people that are getting released before we're really able to get, finish the interviewing. And so if someone's going out, we're having to plug the holes to get through. So I'd like the board to adopt, if you, if you would, a sixty-day release period for all administrative contracts. This does not apply to retirement, it's not applied to teachers, it's just for administrative staff. I think it would put us better positioned if we had people to decide to switch systems in terms of keeping this filled until we can get someone in place.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Right.
Moved and seconded to increase the release period for administrative contact, contracts from thirty to sixty days. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Last item I have actually is an action item, but it's not, it is not, I apologize. I put it in the wrong place in the order. It's actually just a review of the policy that we have for non-certified personnel. We've discussed this several times, uh, through the course of the year. Uh, the board has, I think, made it clear that we wish to, but make sure that we actually carry out the provisions and policies as they're stated in terms of doing other things. Uh, we are, in order to help folks meet that, we were offering bus drivers classes beginning in June. For all of our folks, it'll be, I think the dates are in here. It's the last part of this school year, I don't have the dates, I'm sorry. I think it's the twelfth or the fourteenth. But we're making available for all of them, we'll have other classes if they can make that for some reason. Folks are already beginning to sign up. When they finish that, we'll require they get their Department of Transportation physical. If they don't pass that physical, then we'll start with the provisions and the policy. It was adopted by the board back in June of twenty-two, and then go through it administrative, administrative that way. So, uh, we're just presenting this as information to let you know that we are in fact planning on following through on what the board has directed. And also that we're making provisions for voters to be able to meet the standards of the policy before we begin school next year. That doesn't require any action from the board, but I'll, that answer any questions. Good job, thank you, Steve.
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education in a closed session, subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A one and A six, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute one fifteen C dash three nineteen, and to consider matters relating to additional information on an individual. The board also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dot three eighteen dot eleven A one and the Family Educational Right and Prophecy Act twenty U S C one two three two G and North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash four zero two. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to go in closed session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Close session, great. Alright, need a motion to approve personnel as presented in closed session?
Move to approve personnel. Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve personnel as presented in closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Close session minutes.
Move to approve closed session minutes and keep them closed.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the closed session minutes and keep them closed. Personnel issues. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Alright, does anybody have anything they want to bring up tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Adjourn.
Don't be a screener.
Pardon?
Don't be a screener.
Well, no, I, I wish to get another boy to be next one. Got to have one.
And you're working the whole month or helping her? What week is that?
I'll be, I'll be around, I'll be around for this month and at least three months after that.